Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If members of council could take their seat, we'll begin the meeting. On va commencer la réunion dans une minute. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the council meeting of July 12, 2017. Bienvenue à la réunion du Conseil pour le 12 juillet 2017. For those who are able to, could you please rise for a moment of personal reflection and remain standing as we ask councillor Monnet to introduce our special guest who will sing the national anthem? If you could remain standing, we'll ask councillor Monnet to introduce our guest singer who will sing our national anthem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council colleagues, and guests, I have the great pleasure today of introducing to you Olivia Harris. Monsieur Mayor, colleagues, dear guests, it's a pleasure for me to introduce to you Olivia Harris. Pursuing a bachelor's degree in forensic psychology at Carleton University, Olivia is both a student and a singer. She has gained valuable experience by previously competing in Ottawa's Kiwanis Music Festival. Olivia a pli autant que chanteurs.
As a singer, she took part in the music festival of the Kiwanis Club of Ottawa.
Performs in various locations across Ottawa singing R&B and pop music. Présentement, elle chante de la musique R&amp;B.
She sings R&amp;B and pop music at various places in Ottawa.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sanctum. Car ton bras séportait les pères, il séportait la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you very, very much, Olivia. Merci aussi, conseiller Monnet. It's now my honour to invite Mr. John Blatherwick to the podium for the Mayor's City Builder Award presentation. John, if you could come forward along with your councillor, councillor Mark Taylor, to join us. Welcome. Bienvenue. Right here. And Mark is somewhere here. There we go. I'm happy to welcome neighbours of John's who have joined us here for the presentation. John Blatherick knows his way around City Hall as being recognised for his extensive volunteer experience and work on various boards, numerous community zoning and land use organisations. John is a member of the City of Ottawa's Committee of Adjustment and has served as president and chair of the Zoning and Development Committee for the Wood Park Community Association since 1985. Think about that for a minute, over three decades, 30 years of community service. He's a former member of the City of Ottawa Business Advisory Committee, and his extensive experience includes being the past chair of the Transportation Working Group for the Federation of Citizens Associations of Ottawa, and past president and past director of the Federation of Citizens Associations of Ottawa-Carleton. John is also recognised as city builder for his many contributions as a presenter at many planning, economic development, budget, community service, operations, and Committee of Adjustment meetings. He's contributed to the mayor's task force on public-private partnerships for affordable housing in 2001, and has Ontario Municipal Board experience as an expert witness, appellant, presenter, and community consultant. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank John for his many contributions to the community. I happen to live in the Wood Park community. I'm a resident of John's neighbourhood as well. J'aimerais cesser cette occasion pour...
So, I would like to take this opportunity to thank John Blatherick for his many contributions to the community.
Incredible asset over many years to many communities in the city. And on behalf of your councillor, Mark Taylor, it's my pleasure to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award. Congratulations, John.
You get to my age, you have to get notes. And glasses. I'd like to thank Mayor Watson, councillor Taylor, and the members of council for bestowing this honour on me. It certainly wasn't expected, but it is definitely appreciated. In the day, I was thinking back about how I got involved as a community activist in my neighbourhood, and it came down to a stop sign at the corner of Edgeworth and Lawn Avenues. And this is the summer of 1982, and my wife and myself were living in a house with a two-year-old, and we both said, there's something really wrong with some of the people who are driving on this street. They seem to treat the 50-kilometre limit as a suggestion, not a limit. So, long story short, two years later, after numerous meetings with neighbours, the councillor, transportation planners, traffic... The stop sign was installed. That's, you know, that's the beginning of 35 years of community activism for me. And it's... I look back over that time period and I say to myself, would I change any of this at all? And the answer is absolutely not. I've thoroughly enjoyed the last 30-odd years of serving my community and the Greater Ottawa community as the type of representative that I think every neighbourhood needs, because quite frankly, neighbourhoods are the building blocks of this city. And you have to keep them viable, or you lose your city. Anyway, it's, again, it's an honour for me to accept this, and quite frankly, I'll accept it on behalf of the hundreds of Wood Park residents who have worked tirelessly and given of their time and expertise over the last 50 years, that's how long our association's been in business, to keep our neighbourhood, the unique residential neighbourhood that it is, to keep it affordable, to keep it attractive, to keep it safe, to keep it as a neighbourhood where you want to raise your children. And as a final comment, and also to keep it as a stable tax source for the city treasurer. Anyway, thanks again, and this is a definite honour. Like I said, it was not expected, and it was definitely appreciated. Thank you very much.
Congratulations again, John, and thank you, neighbours, for coming out and visiting. A roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Conseiller Monnet.
Present.
Councillor Myatt. Councillor Harder. Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor O'Shaughnessy.
Present.
Councillor Cadry.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egley.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseil Fleury.
Here.
Councillor Nussbaum.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Conseil Cloutier.
Present.
Conseil Blay.
Here.
Councillor DeRouze.
Here.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
Le quorum est à tes mains.
You have quorum.
Minutes adaption de process verbeaux pour le 23 juin 2017. Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Déclaration de conflits d'intérêt. Communications as presented. Regrets. Councillor Myatt, for health reasons, is not able to be with us today. Motion to introduce reports. Motion pour temps de présentation de rapports. Councillor Cadry, signed by councillor Hubley, please. Councillor Cadry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The motion is that the report from city clerk and solicitor's office entitled Status Update: Council inquiries and motions for the period ending July 7, 2017, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 26, and Confidential Report 26A, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 26, Planning Committee Report 47, and Confidential Report 47A, and Transportation Committee Report 25 be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider the report from deputy city treasurer entitled City debenture issuance, and Planning Committee Report 48, items 1, 8, and 9. Waiver of the rules is being requested due to timelines, as the next regular council meeting is not scheduled until August 23, and that pursuant to subsection 35-5 and 6 of Procedure bylaw 2016-377, council receive and considers item 2 through 7 of the Planning Committee Report 48.
On the motion, carried, add update. Corporate finance, finanç municipal... Sorry, city clerk and solicitor, status update, council inquiries and motions for the period ending July 7, received. Corporate finance, finance municipale, émission de bédenture de la ville. Holds. Zoning bylaw amendment 5514, Manetique Main Street, and part of 1157 Maple Avenue. Modification au règlement de zonage 1-4 rue Manetique Main, et partie de 1157 avenue Maple. Carried. Item 4, speed reduction on Dunning Road and four-way stop at Dunning Road and Divine Road. Reduction de la vitesse sur le chemin dunning, et système de quatre directions à l'intersection des chemins dunning et divine. Carried. Agricultural and Rural Affairs Report, Confidential Report 26A. Councillor Moffat has a technical amendment, signed by councillor DeRouze. Councillor Moffat, please.
Thank you. The amendment just stems from a conversation that we had in camera, and just a report, an error in the report that was identified. And it says therefore be resolved that report be amended by the deletion of the last two sentences of the financial comment, and that they be replaced with once approved by council, a new capital internal order will be created for this project with construction expected to begin in 2019. The reporting of the minutes themselves won't be made public until after the settlement has been executed by both parties.
Landsdowne Partnership Plan Annual Report. Rapport annuel sur le plan de partenariat au parc Landsdowne. Carried. Item 7, Housekeeping, Zoning Bylaw and Official Plan Amendments for the Implementation of coach houses. Modification d'ordre administratif de règlement de zonage et au plan officiel visant la création d'annexe résidentielle. Council is to approve the report recommendations as amended by the planning committee that are before us. So, on the report, carried. Item number 8, Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendments, 1910 Santa Rosa Boulevard. Councillor Cloutier, signed by councillor Harder, has a technical amendment. Councillor Cloutier, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll do the technical amendment in 30 seconds. I just want to take this opportunity to thank... It's been an 18-month journey to get this done. Wanted to thank the community association, the Umvee Acres Community Association, RioCan, staff, and Chair Harder for all their work in getting this done. And the motion, very simple, technical amendment, be it resolved that document 3 of the staff report, being the location map and zoning key map, be replaced with the revised location map and zoning key map attached to this motion.
So, on the amendment as presented by councillor Cloutier, signed by councillor Harder, carried. On the main report, I just want to also thank councillor Cloutier. I know you worked hard on this file, and at times it was a challenging file, but you certainly had a number of meetings and addressed a number of community concerns, and I appreciate councillor Harder's role on that as well. So, on the motion as amended, carried. Next is item number 9, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 1385 Wellington Street West. Modification au règlement de zonage 1-3 rue Wellington. Carried. Dissent by Chernoshenko and... Oh, okay. We just approved it, willing to go back to accommodate the question, agreed. Councillor Chernoshenko.
Thank you. There was a correspondence from councillor Leeper late yesterday regarding measures that I believe the property owner has agreed to take for noise abatement. I do want to point out, we can't take lightly or overturn lightly our own patio bylaws for residential areas. They can cause significant disturbance. I have a couple of examples of those. So, I was pleased to see those measures. That is something that has been formally proposed by the owner, if you will, the proponent here, is it?
At this point, it's a written commitment from the owner. We'll work to work that into the site planner, find a legal mechanism to ensure that it is enforceable. But the timing was such that for the moment, all I can bring is that written commitment. I do have confidence that he will follow through on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, on the report, carried, dissent by councillor Brockington. Item number 10 is zoning bylaw amendment 1039 Terry Fox Drive and 5331 Fernbank Road. Modification au règlement de zonage 1-0-3-9 promenade Terry Fox et 5-3-3-1 chemin Fernbank. Carried. Planning Committee Report 47A. Item 11, Taggart settlement of appeal to official plan amendment 150 in camera. Is there any reason to go in camera? No. Committee recommendations can be approved in open session, so on the committee recommendation, the council endorses the settlement as attached in document 1 and instruct legal services to seek its implementation at the OMB. Carried. Planning Committee Report number 48. Rapport numéro 40 avec le comité de l'urbanisme. Item number 12, Treasurer's Report on Growth-Related Revenues. Rapport de la treizoire sur les revenus liés à la croissance. Received. Item 13, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 809 Richmond Road. Modification au règlement de zonage 8-0-9 chemin Richmond. Carried. Dissent by councillor Leeper. Item number 14, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 2025 Mereble Road and 4200 Innis Road. Zonage de règlement 2-0-2-5 chemin Mereble et 4-1200 chemin Innis.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Black.
I would have a quick motion to defer this item until the next meeting of council. The developer has made some commitments to get back to us. We haven't yet heard back, and I'd like to give them the time in order to do that.
Okay, so moved by yourself.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Cloutier, that item 14 on council agenda 54, zoning bylaw amendment 2025 Mereble Road and 4200 Innis Road be deferred for consideration at the next city council meeting.
On the motion, carried. Great, thank you. Item number 15, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 5970 Fernbank Road. Modification au règlement de zonage 5-9-7-0 chemin Fernbank. Carried. Item 16, Official Plan Amendment 3490 Innis Road. Modification au plan officiel 3-4-9-0 chemin Innis. Carried. Item number 17, Zoning Bylaw Amendment 160 to 170 Cambridge Street North. Modification au règlement de zonage 1-6-0 et 1-7-0 rue Cambridge. No. I'm realising why, I'm glad I'm not on planning committee, councillor. Item 18, Mereble Urban Expansion Area Study, Community Design Plan, Official Plan Amendment, including a secondary plan, étude de la zone d'expansion urbaine de Mereble. Carried. Item 19, Airport and Aircraft Noise, Official Plan, Zoning and Environmental Noise Control Guidelines, bruit associé aux aéroports. Carried. Item number 20, Draft Minister's Decision and Proposed Modification, Official Plan Amendment 180. Decision première des ministres et des modifications proposées, modification 180 au plan officiel. Carried. Bulk Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? No? On the bulk consent agenda as presented? Carried. So, we go back to the item councillor Cloutier held, city debenture issuance. Councillor Cloutier, please.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions for the treasurer on this. The Bank of Canada this morning announced a quarter-point increase to the overnight rate, or the bank policy rate, I think it's called. Does this change your report? Is you're anticipating this, I take? Does this change your report in any way? Does it solidify the hypothesis on which the report is based?
This does not change the report. In fact, it does solidify our expectation that interest rates are going to be on the rise for the next little while.
So, just as I understand, the three components to what we're considering this morning, first, the authority to enter into debt contracts this summer, and this was done last year, where... And again, these contracts will be, if there are any, that are entered into by the mayor or the deputy mayor, they'll be reported to FedCo in the first opportunity?
That's correct.
The... You're asking, you don't need council's approval to enter into, notwithstanding the servicing costs, to enter into the $175 million and the $155 million debt issuance, do you?
This debt is all for projects and debt authority that's been approved by council. I would, I do not need the authority for the $175 million because it's within the budget. The remaining $155 million, though, I have to report to you the budget impact of it.
Okay. And so, the $155 million was to be borrowed in Q3 2018. You want to move that to Q3 2017. The assumption being that, and correct me if I'm wrong, the assumption being that the savings in interest over the 31 years will be, is more than the cost of carrying that debt for the additional year or so.
That's correct, councillor. The, it's not savings, it's actually cost avoidance. But yes, we anticipate that if we issued that debt as planned in 2018, Q3 of 2018, we'd probably be looking at another, at least a points, 70 basis points or 0.7% increase into the interest rates at that time. Over the life of that debenture, that's an additional $17.6 million.
Okay. The... And that, part of that cost, and the third element of the report that we need to vote on, is to advance $4.4 million of additional servicing costs from 2019 to 2018. I guess my question, my first question is, since we're borrowing the money in 2017, why are we not advancing it to 2017?
When you issue a debenture, your first debt servicing payment is six months after. So, if we issue tomorrow on July 13, our first payment will be January 13 of 2018. So, you issue in the last half of the year, it doesn't affect your budget till the following year.
Okay. The $4.4 million, that's not the total cost of servicing the $155 million, is it?
No, there's a little bit more to it. It's actually 5.75, but the rest comes from your development charge reserves, which don't affect your budget. It's the $4.4 million which have to come from your tax-supported reserves and your rate-supported reserves that I'm required to report to you and recommend that we include that in the 2018 budget.
Okay. Can you just refresh our memory as to what the total debt of the city is, or what you expect it to be at the end of 2018, at the end of 2017?
With the $330 million debenture that we're planning on issuing, we anticipate the debt at this point in time would be $1.932 billion, which is in line with your long-range financial plan.
Okay. And what's the average cost of, what's the average cost of our money? What's the average interest rate? And how much interest are we paying this year?
So, you're paying $73 million in interest this year on that. Currently, you have $1.7 billion outstanding, and so our average cost of borrowing right now is 4.3%.
Okay. And just one final question, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. The $4.4 that will be in 2018, where does that money come from? Will there be a budget pressure for that? How are we, how are we going to pay for that in 2018? And will there be an offsetting relief in 2019?
This is a one-time transfer from the reserve to the operating budget in 2018. In 2019, you have the capacity, the debt servicing is there, to pay for the additional $155 million. But the, it'll come from, there's the citywide reserve, there's the rate reserves, and I believe the transit reserves. The majority of it is coming from, actually, from the sewer capital reserve.
So, no operating pressure, but just a balance sheet transfer of...
What we've asked for is really a bridge, because what we're doing, the $330 million is replacing debt that already exists that we'll be retiring within the next two years. So, in 2019, you have $155 million of debt that's retiring, which creates the room in the budget to service the additional $155 we're going to issue this year. So, you do a bridge, you do a transfer from the reserve for that one year, and the next year, you no longer need to do it because the capacity is there in the budget.
Okay. And just one final question. How much of our, before this transaction, our $1.6, $1.7 billion debt, how much was our, is our scheduled repayments this year on that debt?
$105 million.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Thank you very much for the information that you provided this morning. My understanding is that rather than paying 4% on that anticipated issue, that we'll be paying 3.3%?
That is our expectation, yes.
That seems, I'm obviously just a layperson, but when I take a look at what municipalities are paying, that seems like a very advantageous rate to us compared to some other municipalities.
We have a very high credit rating, and that's reflected in the price that we pay for our debt. We have, though, been riding 10 years of really interest rates going down, so I don't expect the next 10 years to be the same.
And I assume that there will be no issue selling that issue, even with the 3.3?
No, the syndicate that we work with, the banker syndicate, have almost got it all sold already.
Wow, okay. And then, that is expected to save us, and again, thank you for the number 583,000 servicing costs per annum over the course of the next 30 years. Is it the intention that that would move into general operating revenues, or is that going to be earmarked for replenishing the reserves from which we're drawing to do the bridge?
So, it's not a savings, it's a cost avoidance. So, you don't have it built into your budget yet. If I were to not issue that in 2019, I would be coming to you with a pressure that you didn't have the capacity within your debt servicing to actually service the debt that we had planned on issuing, or I would reduce the amount of debt that we issue. So, it's, there's no dollars actually being saved, it's just dollars...
Avoiding the pressure.
...cost being avoided.
Okay. No, that's good. Thank you very much, Mayor. No, that's good. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Good questions, thank you. So on the report is presented, carried. Disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority suite à donner des articles ratifiés par les comités en vertus de pouvoir déléguer. Received. Motion to adopt reports, motion important adoption of report, councillor Cadry, please, seconded by councillor Hubley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and seconded by councillor Hubley, that the report from the city clerk and solicitor's office entitled status update, council inquiries and motions for the period ending July seventh, two thousand and seventeen. The report from the deputy city treasurer entitled city debenture issuance, agriculture and rural affairs committee report twenty-six, and confidential report twenty-six A, finance and economic development committee report twenty-six, planning committee report forty-seven and forty-eight, and confidential report forty-seven A, and transportation committee report twenty-five be received and adopted as amended.
On the motion, carried, dubbed A. Motions of which notice have been previously given, motion dont avoir été donnée anti Aman, moved by councillor Monnet, seconded by councillor Taylor with respect to councillor El Shantiri being available to sign documents. Councillor Monnet, carried. Motion by councillor McKenney, seconded by councillor Neusebaum with respect to the Chinatown night market. Motions requiring suspension of the rules or procedures, we have a number of those. Item number one is a motion by councillor Taylor, seconded by councillor Monnet with respect to modernizing Ontario's municipal legislation act and conflict of interest act and elections act on suspension. Carried. Councillor Taylor, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and there was a memo circulated to, to members of council, I believe on July seventh, that outlined these changes. It's a very lengthy motion, I'm just going to read the, therefore be it resolved, but just as a preface, this motion is completely in relation to Bill sixty-eight, the Modernizing Ontario's Municipal Legislation Act of 2017, which amends approximately sixteen pieces of legislation that came into force in the province May thirtieth, 2017. The clerk's office has indicated that there are a number of things we must do to bring ourselves in line with that legislation, most notably the immediate need to ensure compliance with some specific new legislative requirements, including ones relating to members of council requiring maternity or paternity leave, as well as the delegation of authority to individuals members of council representing the mayor. So, the therefore be it resolved is that city council approve the following amendments to existing bylaws related to pregnancy and parental leave for members of council, and the housekeeping amendments to the deputy mayor bylaw pursuant to the changes to the municipal act two thousand and one following the passage of Bill sixty-eight, and enact the related amending bylaws as follows. One, that subsection eighty-three thirteen of the procedure bylaw number two thousand and sixteen three seventy-seven be amended to incorporate the pregnancy parental leave provisions of the municipal act two thousand and one resulting from Bill sixty-eight, the Modernizing Ontario's Municipal Legislation Act 2017, and a related process that provides for council to consider legislative and administrative matters relating to a member's extended leave as described in attachment one and set out in attachment two. And number two, that following changes to section two forty-two of the municipal act two thousand and one resulting from Bill sixty-eight, the bylaw to appoint councillors to act in place of the mayor, bylaw number two thousand and fourteen four forty, be amended to add that pursuant to section twenty-three one of the municipal act two thousand and one, the members of council appointed to act in place of the mayor be delegated the duties and powers necessary to continue to fulfill the current requirements of their roles as deputy mayors or acting deputy mayor, specifically in relation to providing representation at events, signing legal documents, and acting in any other capacity when the mayor is absent or unavailable, as described in attachment one and set out in attachment three. And three, that city clerk and solicitor be delegated the authority to amend any additional policies, procedures necessary to reflect these changes, and be it further resolved that staff be directed to bring forward to the finance and economic development committee and city council a comprehensive report with respect to the mandatory legislative changes resulting from Bill sixty-eight identified in attachment one by Q3 2017.
Thank you, councillor Egli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two very quick questions on the memo, if I could ask those. In the memo, I guess, Mr. O'Connor, it goes to you, the question, under the code of conduct and the integrity commissioner piece, it talks about the requirement for the city to establish a code of conduct for members of local boards, including BIAs. Is that also meant to include community associations?
No, Mr. Mayor, it is not.
Okay. And the other question goes to the piece regarding electronic meetings, and in there it indicates that cities are allowed to set up such a bylaw, providing that any member participating electronically shall not be counted in determining whether or not quorum is present. Does that mean that if you were to participate electronically, that you would not have a vote?
Mr. Mayor, that, that actual determination has not been made yet. There is some discussion with ministry over the fact that since the legislation in Bill sixty-eight doesn't specifically address it, that that would be left to councils to decide. So that's part of what we will be bringing forward in the fall with the comprehensive report.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thank, excuse me, thank you councillor Egli. Any other questions or comments? On the motion that's presented by councillor Taylor and Monnet, carried. Next motion is moved by councillor DeRouze, seconded by councillor El Shantiri with council resolution in support of the province's natural gas grant program on suspension. Carried. Councillor DeRouze, this is some very good news for rural Ottawa.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and this is, it's been a long way forward, and I will read the motion that whereas the province is helping expand access to natural gas infrastructure to more communities in Ontario through a new hundred million natural gas grant program, the program and whereas staff and council support the program for expanding natural gas to more locations in rural Ottawa, and whereas Embridge Gas Distribution, Inc. has been working with staff and rural councillors to identify potential expansion projects that may qualify for funding through the program. And whereas Embridge Distribution, Inc. has determined that it may apply through the program to expand services to Don Robin Shores in Ward Five Residential Expansion, Cartoon Mushroom Farms Limited in Ward Twenty Economic Development, and Stanley Old Maple Lane Farm in Ward Twenty as Economic Development. And whereas accordance with the program before Embridge Gas Distribution, Inc. may submit an application to the province for consideration, council must approve a support resolution. Therefore, it be resolved that council approve the support resolution contained in appendix A and work in accordance with the program guidelines. Appendix A, A, the municipality is supportive of the projects to provide natural gas access to areas under their jurisdiction irrespective of the distributor or supplier proposing to do so. B, the municipality will make a financial contribution to natural gas expansion project that is approved by, by the Ontario Energy Board. The contribution will be equivalent to the municipal property tax that would be recovered on the new natural gas infrastructure being built for a period of ten years beginning from the time that property taxes first come due. Thank you.
Right. Councillor Brockington, a question or comment on this motion?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to know what that financial impact would be, part B of the appendix, councillor DeRouze just read it. I just want to understand, we are going to take a position on whether or not we'll waive their property taxes for a decade? And if that's correct, what, what's the estimated value? I know the plant's not built, but what are we talking about here?
So right now, we collect nothing on these. So I believe the value, what the estimated value of the infrastructure, the taxes that we're giving up is very limited in, I'm talking thousands of dollars, not even tens of thousands of dollars.
This is, just to be clear, this is not a property tax on a plant, it's the right of way, in essence.
Okay.
It's on the pipeline.
It's pretty minimal.
I thought we were contemplating a significant foregoing of, of tax dollars, but that clarification helps. Thank you.
So on the motion, carried. And thank you to members, I know councillor El Shantiri and DeRouze, and Blay and Moffett have been working on this for some time, so it's good to see some movement on that file. The next motion is by councillor Harder, seconded by councillor Moffett with respect to zoning amendments to assist property owners affected by the 2017 flooding. On suspension, carried. Councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we know, we had two hundred and seventy-five dwellings plus along the Ottawa River in May experienced severe flooding damage, and in order to help them, what this motion does is it says that whereas the property owners may require relief from the zoning bylaw in the form of minor variance applications in order to rebuild existing buildings and structures in areas affected by the flooding, and whereas these minor variance applications will cause delays and additional costs to the property owners that are affected by the flooding, the therefore be it resolved part says that we would permit, that staff are going to review the areas affected by the flooding and bring a report to city council by September the thirteenth of this year, and then that proposes amendments to the zoning bylaw or zoning process to permit the reconstruction of existing buildings and structures affected by flooding in according with, in accordance with floodproofing standards and permits issued by the conservation authorities without the need for minor variances. So it's about time, and it's, and it's about money, but it's about giving these people a benefit to get back to their lives as quickly as we possibly can.
Great. So on the motion, councillor Blay.
Very quickly, a question. If homeowner is prepared and capable of doing the work before this report comes to committee, what process are they going to, are they going to be able to go through, an accelerated process, or?
Mr. Mayor, right now, staff are treating those files as priority files, whether they be building code applications or planning act applications. We don't have under delegated authority the ability to waive fees at this stage. However, that's something we will look at in this motion about the fees and looking for authority to, to waive them. So the answer is, right now, all we can do is, is make it a staff priority to expedite those files for people's benefit.
So how, what, how many applications, either for planning act or building code, do we have from these two hundred and seventy-five folks?
My understanding from discussing with our chief building official and our director of planning services is, as of yet, we have not seen any significant applications, because many homeowners are still dealing with their insurance companies to settle for rebuild. So we, we're treating this as a priority to bring this back quickly. If we've had any, that it's a handful at most.
Do you have delegated authority, I appreciate you don't have delegated authority to waive the fee, but do you have delegated authority to push the file through the system in advance of collecting the fee, so that if your recommendation in September is to waive the fee, that the work can be done over the course of the summer months?
I'm going to have to seek advice from the city solicitor's office on that issue, councillor, and if I may, I'll take that offline with them, and we'll get an answer on that, because if we can, if we are able to do that, that's a suggestion we'll take under advisement.
Yeah, so I guess my point is, if you don't have that power, I'd like to add, giving you that power for the summer until the report comes forward.
Mr. O'Connor, is that something that we can add in to give the flexibility to the general manager? Because some people are going to start rebuilding, and I was down in Constance Bay last week, and you start to see some of the work being done.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we can do that right now, and I'll have staff amend the motion. Perhaps we could stand it down, and then we'll, we'll bring it right back.
Okay, councillor Deans on this item?
Thank you. Well, it does in my mind just raise the larger question of advisability of rebuilding in some of these areas that were so affected, and I guess I'm just wondering if, from the municipality's perspective, if we've considered what measures we might be able to take to protect those homes in the future, if they are to be rebuilt in those areas? And if there are any government programs, maybe upper-tier government programs, that would assist families in relocating if they chose to go the relocation route as opposed to rebuilding?
So, Mr. Mayor, first of all, what this motion will do will only allow existing uses to be rebuilt. We have very strict regulations in the province of Ontario about building in flood vulnerable areas and no new uses, or even any significant expansions of existing uses are permitted under the existing rules. So with any structure that will be rebuilt will be required to be flood protected as it's rebuilt, so in most cases, that means the buildings will be built higher than they are today, with impermeable basements to prevent water from entry into that, and that's what creates a lot of these minor variance issues, because you have to create stairs and access ramps perhaps to get up to them, and that's where the zoning problem that we're concerned about may come into play. Should homeowners with their insurance companies choose to relocate right now, it's really between them and their insurance companies. There is no program available to us nor through the province, although the provinces does offer some flood relief assistance. At this stage, that's the extent of what we have available as tools to us.
Thank you.
Councillor El Shantiri.
Mayor, I believe I should have declared conflict of interest on this item earlier, but I will not be voting for this item.
Okay, so we'll ask you to step away, thank you for that. So this also, I think councillor Harder and Moffett's motion is to allow someone to build farther away from the river, in essence, you know, without going through all of the different hoops that they have to, so I think it's a reasonable request, and we'll come back in just a moment, because the city solicitor is going to take up councillor Blay's suggestion that we give the general manager that extra authority during the course of the summertime. So we'll hold off on that one for the time being. Excuse me. Next is councillor Blay, seconded by myself, with respect to work that has to be done on the equi fare system in order to have it ready up and running for 2018. So on suspension, carry. Councillor Blay, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Whereas on June twenty, on June fourteenth, 2017, city council directed staff to develop an equitable single fare option for all OC transport services, known as the equi fare, based on the principles established for the equi pass, including a fifty percent discounted fare, and in compliance with existing commitments and policies regarding fare ratios, the long-range financial plan, and the transit affordability plan, for consideration as part of the 2018 budget process. Whereas the 2018 budget process will begin in November, 2017, and is expected to conclude in December, 2017. And whereas on June twenty-two, 2016, city council approved a restructuring of the OC transport fare system to coordinate with the O train Confederation Line multimodal operations, and one of these changes is the fare change will come into effect on January first of each budget year, subject to annual budget approval. And whereas staff advises that adding a new fare category at this time involves a series of backend changes that, at this point, cannot be completed by January one, 2018. And whereas council wants the fare category to be implemented at the earliest possible opportunity in 2018, therefore be resolved that city council direct staff to undertake the work on the backend systems to recognize an equi fare as soon as technically feasible in 2018, and no later than Q2, based on the council-approved parameters outlined in this motion, in this motion, including the fifty percent discounted fare, and subject to the approval as part of the 2018 budget process. And be it further resolved that staff provide information supplemental to the budget report outlining the implementation timelines for the equi fare as part of the Transit Commission's consideration of the draft 2018 budget.
Councillor Leaper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question of curiosity. When we say backend changes, that's, that's programming in the system, is that on facilities that are owned by, owned and operated by the city of Ottawa, or are those on the Presto servers? What's the, what are the mechanics of that?
Mr. Mancony.
It's a number of elements. The first piece is, we're just rolling out the fare gates on the Trillium line to do infield testing, so they've been programmed, and they're, they're just going through factory testing right now, so to interrupt that process would just cause a bunch of complications, and there's the back.
And we own those gates, and we own the programming.
You own the gates, you, we own the programming, we own, we have all the levers to push and pull on that. It's just timing is everything, and we're just about to roll those out this fall for field testing. And then there's, there is programming in the back office of Presto, there's marketing, there's information dissemination tables, all the usual stuff that goes with any fare changes, but the fare gate piece is the critical piece that we want to watch, and we don't want to destabilize that environment.
And then how are, how is that programming change accomplished with Presto? Is that changes that we have to have them make to their systems, or is that under our control?
With, with what we're contemplating with the, the fifty percent discount, this will be a very easy back office adjustment with Presto. If you're getting into complicated discounting arrangement that impacted the, the programming of the back office, it would be longer, but in this case, what we're thinking about will be pretty straightforward with Presto. But you have to hit it, they have upgrade schedules that we have to adhere to, and we just got to go in sync with them. So this motion gives us all the latitude to do things well and position it well for execution.
Thanks, and happy to support it. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. On the motion by councillor Blay, carried. The next motion is by councillor El Shantiri, seconded by my The next motion is by councillor El Shantiri, seconded by myself, with respect to additional funds for roadwork and pathways and so on. On suspension, carried, councillor El Shantiri, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is a good news motion. So in June, we added, or the council approved additional of $2.5 million to projects, road resurface and citywide, to begin to address the deterioration of our road condition. So with this motion, we're adding additional $500,000. So therefore, we are to resolve the city council approve the addition of $500,000 to project 908492, 2017, road resurface and citywide, to be funded from the citywide capital reserve as described in this motion.
All right, thank you. Councillor Brockington?
Thank you, your worship. First of all, thank you councillor El Shantiri for your motion and bringing this back into the public forum for discussion. To the treasurer, what is the current balance of the citywide capital reserve account?
The projected closing balance of the citywide reserve is currently $24 million.
Twenty-four. Can you just list a handful of projects that the capital reserve could cover? Roads is obviously one of them, but is it just any type of capital project?
The citywide reserve is used for all capital projects except for transit projects, water and sewer projects, social housing projects, childcare projects. Everything else is, oh, and vehicles are funded from their own reserve.
So we have a pretty wide discretion on how to allocate these dollars?
We do.
Okay. Just to put into context, I'm trying to better understand the roadwork deficit that exists right now. There must be an index that we use to classify every single road, whether the road was repaved last month, or whether the road was repaved 40 years ago. And every road is in a particular state or a particular condition. How many roads, or what is the value of the work that needs to be done for roads that have surpassed that magical threshold, that need pothill work or repair work? What is the value of that work that needs to be done?
Mr. Mayor, when we brought the comprehensive asset management report, NDLRFP, a few months ago, what we indicated there was for tax-supported asset, of which the roads are a big component. We needed to invest basically $195 million per year, and right now, we're investing $125 million. So that is the annual shortfall that we have in terms of investments.
But that pot covers more than just roads.
Correct. So roads, roads is probably half of, half of that pot. The rest is for buildings, parks and bridges.
I'm just trying to ascertain, obviously, it's a big number, but are roads still need work? That's my point. I'm going to strongly support this motion because there are roads in my ward which are still, in mid-July, in critical condition. Certainly, I've had a discussion with the general manager, but I just think we need to be thinking about as we go into budget preps with our community and when we solicit feedback and input, that we need to be seriously thinking about the condition of our roads, especially if we have another bad winter, to only exacerbate the condition of them. So I mean, I'm supporting this, but really, the, the needs that exist out there in all wards, really, we're not meeting those needs. And this is not a, a new discussion or complaint, but really, there's still significant work that needs to be done. And this council at budget time certainly will be looking at what additional resources we can be putting into repairing and repaving for 2018. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leeper?
Thank you, Mayor. To pick up a little bit on what councillor Brockington was saying, there are a lot of roads that are in very poor shape. When the initial $400,000 list came out, I was disappointed to see, you know, a number of roads that we've been talking about with city staff for a while, not on that list. How will you be choosing the next set of projects, and what is the opportunity for councillors to input on that?
Maybe I can just put this in perspective. We're talking about $500,000. You're not going to get a road in every wall.
No, no, it's obviously a short list that came out. But I think it's still a legitimate question, Mr. Mayor, how many, or how will they choose those next projects?
The same way they chose the last list, based on a priority list and safety. Is that correct, Mr. Gaultier?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. And one of the important considerations that we have to keep in mind is the time of the year that we're at right now. So the roads that we will be identifying will be roads that we know that we can actually deliver this year, given that we're already into mid-July. All of our paving contracts are already out. So basically, the list that we put together will be a very short list, based on the $500,000, and it's going to be geared around the ones that we know that we can deliver between now and the end of the year.
Prioritized as well by the, the safety considerations and leaving them unrepaired for the while, if I have to understand what the mayor's saying.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So on the motions presented, carried, councillor El Shantiri has declaration of interest because we have the motion ready now. Councillor El Shantiri, please.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. I, councillor Eli El Shantiri, declare a potential direct procurement interest on the Harder-Moffatt motion of July 12, 2017, with respect to zoning amendment to assist property owner affected by May 2017 flooding, as I own property in the area affected by the May flooding event.
Okay, thank you, councillor. So councillor Harder and Moffat motion has been amended, as was the suggestion, I believe, of councillor Blay, to give the general manager and the chief building inspector that authority to move on it this summer. So on the motion, carried, thank you. Next, we have a motion by councillor Harder, seconded by councillor Flurry, with respect to interim control that requires suspension of the rules of procedure. On suspension, carried, councillor Harder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this would be in effect for a year. This interim control bylaw is being introduced to respond to serious concerns from the city and from affecting, affected communities on how development is occurring within established inner-city communities. Established communities are meant to accommodate a gradual evolution over time and are not meant to be the focus for incompatible intensification activity. The zoning allows a variety of low-rise residential building types, ranging from single-detached homes to low-rise apartments. Within many established neighborhoods, development is occurring in a manner that is not reasonable, is not well-regulated, and is not respectful of the fabric of established communities. Many of these issues are not appropriately addressed by current land use provisions. These growing concerns are shared not only by the communities, but by the city as well. The city is committed to taking action on these matters. And in particular, we are seeing established neighborhoods across the city, but predominantly in communities of Sandy Hill, Overbrook, and Old Ottawa East, as well as Heron Park, Old Ottawa South, Centertown, where they're subjected to building forms with excessive bedroom counts and community impacts of noise, garbage and traffic. We know these are harmfully impacting both the character and livability of these neighborhoods for existing residents and new residents moving into these new building forms. These deep concerns are shared not only by the communities, but by the city as well. The city recognizes that we must continue building on past actions and take action to restrict the regulatory and procedural loopholes that are allowing these building forms to continue. We intend to do so through this interim control bylaw and by moving forward on the R4 review, which we are well into that review now. This interim control bylaw will give the city, the industry and affected community associations, time to work together to find real solutions to this challenge through the R4 zoning study and develop specific strategies to limit the further development of these excessive developments and ensure these do not occur in other neighborhoods across the city. We are also reaffirming council's commitment towards finalizing this study to ensure development occurs in a gradual, respectful manner in our established communities in keeping with the vision of our official plan. So the motion today speaks to that, and I think you have it before you. Do you? Yep? Therefore, be it resolved that the ongoing R4 study being undertaken by the Planning, Infrastructure and Economic Development Department be deemed the study required to be directed by council pursuant to section 38 of the Planning Act in respect of the land use planning policies associated with low-rise, single-detached and multi-unit dwellings for the purposes of assessing the land use planning impact of such dwellings where they contain more than four bedrooms and establishing further zoning standards to help ensure their compatibility and that the study be expanded to include R1, R2 and R3 zoned lands within the study area. And be it further resolved, as you can see on the screen, that council enacted an interim control bylaw to apply to all residential R1, R2, R3 and R4 zones within the area defined on the maps attached to this motion. So you'll see, you do have it before you, I think you have printed copies before you. And no dwelling unit in any building other than a single-detached dwelling may contain more than four bedrooms, and no such unit may exceed 120 meters squared in floor area. Two, that no single-detached dwelling may contain more than six bedrooms. Three, no multi-unit dwelling with six dwelling units or fewer may exceed a total floor area of 500 meters squared, measured from the inside of the exterior walls, including any basement, motor vehicle storage area or any other building area. And four, notwithstanding the above, the development that we dealt with at, on site plan yesterday at Planning Committee located at 70 Russell Road is not subject to these regulations. And that's the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Flurry, on the motion, please.
Merci, merci, monsieur. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the committee's chair for her leadership on this issue. I'd like also to talk about the good work of city staff over the past years, be it for conversions or that has to do with infill one and two. I think that some considerable efforts were put forward at last council. We had the specific report for Sandy Hill regarding the garbage that had an impact on the bylaw. We brought some amendments also for the noise. It's not an issue that specifically applies to Sandy Hill, but because it is close to the University of Ottawa, we could feel the impact of what we call usually a bunk house, what the community could declare as a legal rooming house. And today, what we have in front of us is a very serious approach to get to a solution, a review of R4 zone. So I think we are in the, on the right, in the right direction. We will do the study for the R4 zone, but we need to be able to correct the current dynamics, and that's what the amendment is proposing to do right away. So I'd like to ask members of council to support this motion. Many communities have been mentioned because they seem to be affected by these development impacts of those bunk houses. So I'd like to thank the chair for her submission today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I likewise would like to thank our staff for preparing this motion and to, and to chair Harder. I was pleased to learn that it was going to be coming forward today, and I kept my mouth shut because that's what we have to do with interim control bylaws, or in order not to jeopardize the status or advance sort of insider tips to people who may be affected. I don't support an interim control bylaw lightly. We've only used one once in my seven years here in council now, I believe, and they are meant to target particularly egregious, outrageous, whatever terms you want to use here, examples. And all you would have to do is see some of the photos or come up and look and have one of those wholly, and you can fill in the blanks, what word, that I probably shouldn't say in public there, word you would, you would attach to that there when you look at one of these buildings. It's a little deceptive when you see some of the verbiage in this, in this motion, when you see four bedrooms per unit. What we're talking about is, at the moment, is four, five or six bedrooms per unit, but the unit is one floor of a building. Picture a detached, ordinary dwelling in Old Ottawa South or Overbrook or elsewhere that had a family of, who knows? Maybe it was a big family one day. Maybe there were six or seven people who lived there at one point. But it was one set of garbage, it was one family's worth of vehicles, it was one family's worth of activity and noise. Now you have each floor of what is a massive rectangular, typically ugly building, bearing no relationship to the neighborhood, in the middle of a block of traditional homes for that area, where each floor has four, five or six residents. Typically unrelated, not cooperating in the use of their garbage or their green bin or their recycling, very often not participating in any of those. They don't know how, they're not collaborating. So even if they manage to get the collection day right and not put the wrong bins out and not put the bags out when it isn't actually the week for garbage collection, which often don't, you will have 16, 18, 20 garbage bags out on a non-existent front lawn. Just imagine if you got the week wrong and the other urban dwellers going by the name of squirrel, raccoon, skunk and otherwise have got into those. I hope I've painted a picture for you of what we're really dealing with here. We know, we know that infill development is coming. You've heard the refrain at every planning committee meeting, "I'm not against infill, but," and this is a serious "but." And so this is a chance for us to put a stop to the worst for a short period of time to get the rules adjusted again. These are clever people who want to make money. Each time we create a new set of rules, they find ways to get around them, and we have to respond because like doping in sports, you never know what the next one is going to be. All you can do is respond to it once it's there, and this is the next response. I hope someday we'll run out of, they'll run out of options and we won't have to keep doing this, but this is the latest, and I'm pleased to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Neusbaum, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I can simply echo my appreciation to staff and to councillors Harder and Flurry for bringing this forward. Much of what councillor Charanoshenko said is true in terms of not taking this issue lightly, but also recognizing the value of having something in place while the R4 review is underway. And to that effect, just a couple of quick questions to staff. I certainly welcome the suggestion here that we widen the R4 study to include R1, R2 and R3 zoned lands within the study area. I'm just wondering if there's going to be flexibility on staff's part to adjust the study area borders, because with the inclusion of those three other R zones, there may be a need to include areas that were not considered as part of the R4 study because the R4 study was focused on R4. Mr. Deputy Mayor, the answer to the question is yes, most certainly, from the perspective of the R4 study, which will now probably be renamed, we can, we can address the geographic boundaries within the study. However, just to be clear, the interim control bylaw boundaries are set through this proposed bylaw. Yeah, that is understood. And just so, obviously, this is going to affect the public consultation elements of the study, the timelines. Could staff perhaps just give us a rough indication of how the study period will be changed? I presume that the idea will be to bring back the results of that study within 12 months so that we're in a position to implement the study recommendations before having to deal with the potential renewal of the interim control bylaw. So I'll, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll start with the answer Mr. Smith may choose to add additional elements to, but our intent actually is to come back twice to count to planning committee on this matter. We believe there are a number of matters that could be implemented very quickly and as a result of our prior consultation and not really subject to debate, and we'll bring those matters forward in the fall. We will need the full year of the interim control bylaw to deal with the community and the broader matters. We've heard loud and clear in consultations with the community that they want us to look at a bigger array of potential solutions than we initially proposed, and we take that input very seriously, and we want to go back and have the time to actually do that. So we'll report, just to conclude, we'll report in the fall when we give that interim report where we stand more broadly and where we think the timelines are at that point. Okay, great, thank you. And just a question or two to the city solicitor. I take it that the trigger for, let Mr. Mark take a seat, I take it that the trigger for, once this bylaw, if, assuming this bylaw is passed by council, if an applicant hasn't yet pulled the building permit, is that kind of the threshold moment in time to which this bylaw would apply?
Mr. Chair, the question would be, has the applicant crystallized his or her entitlement to a building permit? There comes a point in time where the applicant has filed absolutely everything that is required of him, him or her, that the application has crystallized, and it is my view that And it is my view that it's at that point they'd be entitled to a building permit. If they're not at that stage, then they would be caught by the interim control bylaw.
And maybe Mr. Mark could just explain a little bit. Again, assuming council passes this bylaw, if it is appealed, I presume there's a right of appeal on the part of an applicant? Is that correct? Yes. And so let's assume for a moment that the bylaw is appealed. What is the status of the bylaw during the appeal period?
Mr. Chair, as with other zoning bylaws, it remains in force pending the determination of the appeal. It remains in force, Mr. Chair.
Okay. That's it. Thank you very much. And again, thank you to staff and to colleagues for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much. Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Given that there are other neighborhoods not captured within the attached maps, how is it determined what neighborhoods to exclude, what neighborhoods to include?
Mr. Mayor, we actually took a very close look at where the activity is with respect to what's been termed as the bunkhouse issue. And we recognize that there's other neighborhoods that are experiencing various challenges in terms of infill and how that infill integrates with the established character of those communities. Within those situations, we didn't find that they were, in fact, meeting sort of the threshold of the bunkhouse issue that the interim control is really trying to address itself to. Having said that, as Mr. Willis indicated, and with the expansion of the study to look at R1, R2, R3 as well, still focusing on sort of ensuring that we have the proper rules in the zoning bylaw with respect to ensuring compatible integration of new development with the established characteristics and conditions of existing communities, we will be looking at other areas. So areas that might not be captured by the interim control are not excluded from being looked at as part of the broader study that we're undertaking.
I don't have bunkhouses, per se, but I certainly have in Copeland Park, tiny homes that get bought cheaper than, I guess, what the average house is going for in the neighborhood, get renovated. We're very close to Carleton University. So we see multiple students come in. So we don't have the bunkhouse property standard-type issues, but we have compatibility-type friction in the neighborhood where you have established communities. You have a large quantity of people moving into these smaller houses. So I'm satisfied with the geographic answer. Just, it goes to enforcement. Counselor Neusbaum asked about sort of the legal threshold. But will this just fall on the shoulders of Ottawa bylaw to enforce that if there are homes that breach this bylaw, they will be charged with going out into the community?
Mr. Mayor, the short answer to the question is this effectively freezes planning applications pending as it relates to the interim control bylaw study area. Should there be any breach of zoning more generally? It always does go to bylaw enforcement. But I think this gets picked up really when people come in and apply for a building permit or when they come to apply to the committee of adjustment or when they apply for a rezoning application. That will be the trigger point at which we will identify and inform people that there's an interim control bylaw in place.
But most people don't show up at City Hall and say, "I plan to build a bunkhouse." They plan to renovate a home. And maybe their motive is to make sure they can squeeze in as many people. But ultimately, if neighbors report what they believe is a bunkhouse or a home that's being used inappropriately, it will be Ottawa bylaw that does the enforcement.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you want to rebut, Counselor Shirelli? No? Okay. Counselor Blay?
Thank you very much. With the extension of light rail, the city and the mayor and others have indicated that we believe that this will expand the radius that students can, students from out of town in particular, can occupy. Would we anticipate that the new rules that come out of this study would apply across the city or only to these two study areas?
Mr. Mayor, it's premature to answer that question, but I think your point's well taken that we actually hope that with light rail transit, this problem might be part of the solution of this problem where people won't feel they need to live in crammed conditions immediately on the doorstep, that they may find that it's very convenient to live in other locations. So we believe that that will help us. But should this issue be apparent that it has a broader geographic reach in the study that Mr. Smith's team is dealing with? We can certainly make them citywide rules should that come up as an appropriate conclusion of the study. So your point's taken, and we'll take it under advisement.
How will it come up, though? Because if it's not currently a problem, we want to try to avoid it from becoming one, right?
Mr. Mayor, we have a number of issues that relate to the definitions in the bylaw of rooming houses, apartments, and those sorts of things. And those definition changes will apply likely citywide. I don't see that in any circumstance where they wouldn't. And certain other zoning provisions related to the R1 through R4 zones may come forward that would likely apply across the entire zone we come forward. Should other issues come up through the public consultation to our attention, we'll take a look at those.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. On the report, carried. Next motion requiring suspension of the rules by Counsel Dean, seconded by Counsel Harder with respect to Airbnb. On suspension, carried. Counselor Deans, please.
Thank you, and, Mr. Mayor, just read the motion first and then I'll speak to it. But I must say, this interim control bylaw on bunkhouses is a nice segue into what I want to talk about. Where is the city's zoning bylaw 2008-250, as amended, seeks to regulate development and residential zones in a manner that is compatible with existing land use patterns, including, for example, so that detached dwellings and the residential character of neighborhoods are maintained or enhanced? And where is, given the relatively recent advent and increase in the use of popular online platforms that facilitate bookings for short-term residential use in a variety of neighborhoods and zones across the city? And where is such use may have an impact on residential neighborhoods, including the potential for increased traffic, parking, noise, and related property issues, and which may have unintended consequences on maintaining or enhancing neighborhoods? Therefore, be it resolved that city council direct the Planning, Infrastructure, and Economic Development Department in consultation with the city clerk and solicitor department to report back to Planning Committee by Q4 2017 with an update on the availability and effectiveness of existing regulatory tools under the zoning bylaw 2008-250 to address complaints that may be associated with such short-term uses, including potential conflicting land uses. I've asked for suspension so that the staff can do this work over the summer months. And although the motion was written to say, "Report back in Q4 2017," I've actually changed that to say "by Q4" because in speaking with Counsel Harder, the secondor of the motion told that Planning Department doesn't think that this will be particularly onerous, and they could get that done probably before Q4 2017. So just to speak to it briefly, I'm sure I'm not alone in seeing the plethora of challenging issues that are arising in our neighborhoods as a result of Airbnbs or other online platforms establishing in the neighborhoods. When the zoning bylaw was written back in 2008, we, our world was different then. We didn't contemplate the issues that might arise by these types of online platforms. And I can tell you, I'm dealing with a particularly challenging one in my ward right now. And working with staff from both bylaw services and the legal department, we're seeing that we need some tools to address this. So as a starting point, I thought it would be important to ask our Planning Department and Legal Department to take a look at our existing zoning bylaws to see if perhaps they could be more broadly interpreted to address some of the arising issues from platforms like Airbnb. And so this is just a starting point. It's a review to take a look at the tools that we have and see if perhaps a new interpretation was put on those rules, if they would give us the tools that we need to adequately address the emerging issues. So that's what the motion does, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Deans. Counsel Shirelli, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'm glad to see this come forward because in our ward, we're getting a number of people now who are upset that, you know, they have a residential neighborhood that was not supposed to be a neighborhood of hotels.